To order, clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dallahan?
Here.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press in the Cape May County Herald on January 13th, 2020. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start this afternoon's work session with public safety. Mr. Dallahan?
Yes, may I ask the court representative to please come up and provide the report?
Good afternoon.
Debbie.
Right now, the court is waiting for their destruction reports so that we can get rid of all old tickets. And until the state does that, new paperwork can be pulled and shredded. Our state computer system is undergoing a lot of updates, which is going to mean more training, which last month I told you, we're undergoing training, we're going to be undergoing more. And right now, we are preparing by ordering different supplies such as tickets, notices, so that we will be prepared for the summer. Anybody have any questions for me?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
And next is the fire department.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
A report for the fire department for the month of January, we had fifteen fire calls, ten EMS calls. That's right on track with last year's numbers. The fire calls included one building fire, one search for a person in the water, three natural gas leaks, two cover assignments, seven fire alarms, and one carbon dioxide alarm. And that is my report. Any questions?
Questions?
No questions.
And you'll be doing your presentation beginning into the council meeting, correct? Okay.
Chief, you're up.
Good afternoon. Monthly report for January for the police department, there were seventy motor vehicle stops and one adult was arrested. An update with personnel, we have one recruit in Slio Two, that's special class two training at the police academy, and expect the graduation date of April. And we have seven class two recruits that are undergoing backgrounds right now for the spring academy at the Cape May County Police Academy, with an expected graduation date of late June. And we are currently formulating a selection process for the officer vacancy that was left by Officer Dixon. In terms of county communications, everything is still going well. We're still transitioning with the CAD system, it's a learning process, but all seems to be going very well. Everyone's picking up pretty easily, so.
No, it's good to hear. Good.
Very good. Okay. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next is beach patrol. Sandy.
Good afternoon. I don't have a lot to report. The only thing I'm doing right now is putting together the information for the upcoming summer to distribute it to the guards, when we would start and what you need to have in order as far as physicals and things like that. That's all I have. Any questions?
Are you prepared to go through the salary increases at this point?
To go through, what would you like me to do?
The beach patrol salary increases that we discussed at the last meeting?
Yes.
Do you have a presentation to make on that?
No, I don't. I can discuss it if you'd like. I didn't know you wanted me to discuss it. We've had an ongoing problem with retaining guards and attracting new guards. And it's gotten to a point where we are understaffed, maybe eight people a day. And what it, we have stands that aren't protected, we have stands that are protected by people with very little experience. And what happens is the people that are there are doing the work of two. And it's been a problem for a long time. And we even have problems with discipline because they're not really valuing the work as much because they can make that much money anywhere. And with a lot of thought and a lot of research and speaking with the other supervisors, the numbers that I recommend, I feel would be effective. And that they're in line with the level of the physical demands and the level of responsibility that we expect in this town. Are there any questions about anything specific?
And the resolution that we're looking at with that 2020 rate, that is, and maybe it's a question for Jim, that is what, that's the number that we went over two weeks ago, correct? And is what is adding to the increase? And council saw that in addition to what that would cost us in 2020?
And that's all been included in the budget? Sandy, are you talking to other lifeguard groups along the shore and getting similar commentary from them about the difficulty of getting and retaining people?
They, I think they, we've had a number of meetings. We have meetings every summer. And we, that's one of the things that we discuss. And it is a common problem. The problem here is worse because it's so expensive to be here. You can't, you know, if you're in Wildwood Crest, you can still afford a rent. And they're all having problems, but ours are definitely worse. You know, we just don't get the numbers of, we don't even have enough people applying to actually fill the openings. And then we end up hiring people that really are substandard. And it's not really something where you can't, if someone can't swim out to a flag, they can't swim out to a flag. You know, if they can't do the job, they can't, you can't hire them. So we're in a difficult situation. But our, they're all having issues, ours are worse, you know, for sure.
Any other questions?
So this is something you want?
Well, I mean, for the people who are here, though, it's, you know, we've heard this for the most part. But so this will put us, your new proposed rates would put us on a par or slightly ahead of where Avalon stands right now, right? You guys catch, they catch up like this, right? So this kind of equalizes it for the moment?
It will end up equal. They will do the same thing. I've been disgusted with, they're having the exact same problems that we are. And it will probably be very similar by the time.
And it's rough, the scales, it's roughly a forty dollar a day increase?
Right.
Right? So two hundred, roughly two hundred dollars a week for a guard?
They work six days a week unless they're under eighteen, they work five.
Two hundred and forty.
Two forty, right.
Okay. No, I just, just so that people know what numbers we're talking about, that's all.
So this is a resolution that'll come back in two weeks for approval, or do we have to wait until budget approval? Okay. Is everybody comfortable with this coming back in two weeks?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Right on cue. Good afternoon. Couple of things. As discussed in the public safety committee meeting, I have been in communications with a company called Aqua Fence. It's a company based in the Netherlands. We are trying to come, get a solution. It's a little more effective to stop the flooding at the boat ramp during our major flooding events. So I am in communications with them. They have a representative that's willing to meet with us next week. So I was going to email all the stakeholders and that, that had discussed we can get down to the boat ramp and take a good, long look at a solution until we have our long-term solution for our plans down there. I was down there recently at just a full moon high tide, and it's, we need to do something because the water's just gushing in there. And we can put our bulkheads at, you know, all of these heights, but if we don't plug our holes, and the boat ramp's a big one, the folks that live down there will attest to that. So we'll be emailing you, Mr. Smith, as well as Grant and some other folks to try to get a time when their representative who's up in the Philadelphia area can come down and meet with us, look at our problem, and hopefully be able to help something out. It's a big company in Europe. They have a lot of issues, obviously, with this type of stuff in the Netherlands. So we'll see what we can do there. Just kind of listen to them and see if they're able to help us.
Can you ballpark it?
No.
No?
Not until, we haven't even gotten to the numbers type of situation. But again, if you just look on their, Google that Aqua Fence is the name of the company. They were actually suggested to me by somebody else during a discussion.
Okay.
Also going forward, I will now be attending the flood mitigation committee meetings. So hopefully be able to help out there. As far as, in reference to CRS, we're still chipping away at that. You know, I've told Kim anything she needs. So I am involved in that. And to that end, I wanted to thank Grant, Senator, or play that, Congressman Van Drew's office has now been made aware of the problem we're having with National Weather Service as far as the points for the storm-ready problem. They did offer some suggestions, things that we can do, and then they would be willing to help us in this. It will be on a county level, where we have to get all the municipalities to meet the requirement. The county would attest to that, we've met that requirement. And then at that point, we'll reach out to Congressman Van Drew's office again.
Can you explain what the problem is that needs fixing?
So this is a collateral duty for one of the forecasters up at Mount Holly, the storm-ready program. So for the members of the public and any members on council, you can earn up to seventy-five points for the CRS rating. So that's a lot of points. And unfortunately, right now, even though we are doing what needs to be done, and beyond that, to meet the standard for the storm-ready program, National Weather Service in Mount Holly, according to them, is understaffed, and they don't have the ability to check the boxes, give us our letters, saying that we are a storm-ready community. So their suggestion, what we'd like to do is get all the municipalities in the county to show on a county level that we're meeting the standard, and then they would certify the county as a storm-ready community.
I would assume every municipality's having the same problem, or are they saying?
No, that is correct, Mayor.
Okay.
So the issue is not everybody, we don't know how much everybody's going to want to participate in it because CRS isn't as important to certain, you know, other municipalities as it is to us. But again, Grant did speak with somebody in the office, and they had made that suggestion. So we are moving forward with that. The information he sent to me, I have forwarded off to the county. So we're going to see if we can get some help from them to kind of light a fire, if you will, under National Weather Service because it's important to us. And we, you know, we'd really like to get those points to help, you know, keep the residents' flood insurance rates down. So that is a work in progress. I've been messing with this for about two years now, but I just want to let you.
Two years?
It's been that long since we've, actually, maybe even longer, since National Weather Service has done this program. Now, they're doing it in other offices, it's just the problem we're having with Mount Holly office.
Wow.
But we are working on it. So. And then the last thing is, I'll be out of town from February 29th and through March 5th. But Roger has assured me that he will be able to hold down the fort if there's any issues.
Okay.
And that's my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your vacation.
That's it for me.
Anything else for public safety? From anybody? All right. Moving on to recreation and tourism. Mrs. Gensimer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a proposal underway for potentially bringing platform tennis to Stone Harbor, and we're very excited to present it this afternoon. Invented in 1928, platform tennis is an exciting, fast-paced racket sport that is played on a miniature tennis court with four wire walls around the perimeter. It follows the same rules as tennis with the exception that the ball can be played off the wire walls, similar to the game of racquetball and squash. Everyone who plays loves the sport because it is so family-oriented, social, and appeals to all age groups and genders who play together. And I'm very, very pleased to introduce Tom King, who has a short presentation for you.
Thank you.
How are you?
So, thank you very much for taking the time to entertain this. We're really excited about the potential for being able to bring platform tennis to Stone Harbor. I myself am avid player. I play probably three to five times a week, as Jen said. It was invented in 1928, very rapidly growing sport because it is attracting a lot of tennis players into the game that can utilize their skills. But it's a lot faster pace, and it appeals to all genders. It plays, it appeals to all age groups as well. And it's something that a lot of the people on Seven Mile Island, as owners and visitors and people who lease come, they love to play the sport as well, but they don't have an opportunity to play it here. I thought the fastest, easiest way to give you twenty seconds and just let you see how it's played. This is. So play just like tennis, except you can play it off the wires like racquetball and squash. And it's a game that people, once they play it, a lot of tennis players like myself, I played since I was nine years old. Once I started playing, I quit tennis and played this only, that's it. I played four or five days a week. I played with an eighteen-year-old, against an eighteen-year-old yesterday. I played mixed paddle, which is co-ed on Sunday. So it's a sport for all genders and all ages. Part of the reason why it's so popular, it's one of the fastest-growing racket sports in the country, there's a big decline in tennis, as you probably have noticed. Since 2009, there's been a 22% decline in popularity among, you know, occasional players and the core players who play all the time. And avid players, 31% drop in popularity. This is evidenced in the pros as well. We didn't have, we didn't make it past the third round in the U.S. Open. There hasn't been anybody who's won the Open in U.S. Men's since 2005. So, I mean, it's been a really big decline. How popular is the sport? I can tell you just myself alone, in our eastern Pennsylvania area, which I, where I live, there are thousands of players. And so many of them are homeowners in Stone Harbor, in Avalon, Sea Isle, all over the place. It's a very, very great sport. Goes from eight to seventy, 3,500 active players in eastern PA, 4,500 in New Jersey. The four-time national champion for paddle comes from New Jersey. So, I mean, and probably seven, seven out of the top twenty players are from New Jersey as well. It's played in forty-five states and two foreign countries. So it is a big, you know, it's a big sport that's played all over. These are just a quick handful of letters from Stone Harbor residents that have been here a long time, saying how much they'd love to have paddle courts here in Stone Harbor and would love the opportunity to play the sport. Right now, you know, they only have tennis, which they're kind of moving away from. And, you know, the other side of that is they have pickle to play, but they would much rather play paddle if they could. So there's a big population of people that would play paddle and pickle. And I think one sport feeds off the other, you know. So you're going to have an increase in both sports by having this here. I just wanted to show you a little bit about the age thing, though. You know, paddle is a very age-friendly sport, you know. And just to give you a quick, very quick summary of how this happened in my local area. Conestoga's a pretty big high school in eastern Pennsylvania. Six years ago, somebody wanted to bring paddle to Conestoga, so they created a club sport at Conestoga. In just a few years, and this was all done with volunteers and pros who decided to donate their time to help bring the sport to Conestoga, it is now the third-largest sports club in all of Conestoga with 120 kids playing. What that does is it creates a multi-generational ability for the sport to be carried on, and it makes the sport better because they're fast, they're good, they learn earlier, they bring a whole level of intensity to the sport that makes it better. So where will it go, how will it fit? Two tennis courts can host two paddle courts. So that's what we're looking for, you know. And we have the ability to put them on 96th Street, if you'd allow us. The five courts, that they're there, we can take two of them, or it can go on 81st Street, wherever, you know, the space can be provided for. But it's roughly two for two. So two courts can host two courts. So here's a rendering of how it might look on 96th Street, if we were to do it there. We would put two paddle courts up there. And if it were on 81st Street, this is how it would look on 81st Street as well. So it's two courts for two courts. And I just wanted to show you a snapshot of this. This is in Florida, where, you know, paddle and pickle and tennis are really, really popular. This is at the villages in Orlando, and they have probably close to forty to fifty paddle courts down there in this, in the area, in this, in this village. This picture here shows you six platform tennis courts, six platform tennis courts, two tennis courts, and six pickle courts, which is about how a breakout is in popularity, because they build this according to the demographic of the population, what those people want. And this is how it's played. It's, and this is the same kind of court because it's by the seashore. These are done on concrete without the need for propane tanks underneath and with lights. So it's exactly how we would build them here. How much will it cost? This is just a rough estimate from one of the top builders for courts in our area. It's about 105,000 for two different courts. And that, and we think that we can go to the National Association, which is called APTA, as well as the local mid-Atlantic area chapter of, called MAPDA, and get funding that would equal probably 21,000 of that. I myself would spearhead a fundraising project. I think I could get a lot of friends and family to raise, and that's a very conservative number. I think we could raise some money, leaving the remaining cost somewhere around 80,000. The maintenance is very, very low on these type of courts. I'd say 500, a dollar a year for tightening the screens, and another 500, which is, if we didn't do that, we could line them ourselves, but lining the courts. We think that you could easily charge 20 to 24 dollars for a 90-minute period, 16 to 20 for a 60-minute period, and at five sessions a day, times 90 days during the season, at 24 per session, two courts, you're looking at 21,600 dollars a year in revenue. So it can quickly and easily become a moneymaker in the timeframe. This was, came up in the last time we spoke. What is the maintenance that will be needed? We went to the builder of these courts, and he says the substructure is aluminum, has been powder coated. The screens are galvanized and will be good for years. If it begins to rust over time, it can be painted with rust-resistant paint and cold galvanized. And the snow leaf gates or all the superstructure around it, the things that host the screens themselves, are made of PVC material, which are impervious to salt destruction. And there are courts right on the beach. This is a picture of them. Those two white things you see are tents. They did an event there. But those are two paddle courts right there. They're in Fairfield, Connecticut, and have been there for years. So these are built on the beach a lot of times, and they withstand the elements just fine. And why should we do this? Well, paddle represents another family-oriented sport. People who play racket sports usually play more than one racket sport. And right now, if they're not playing tennis, they only have pickle. We'd love to bring some racket diversity into Stone Harbor. And I think it would be very representative of the demographic in Stone Harbor for them to have some alternatives. And this is a great alternative. It is family-friendly. Whole families play. That's some of the letters that I have. I'm happy to share those with you. But the letters say, my whole family plays, you know, everybody, my kids. And it's multi-generational. A lot of families have three generations that play the sport. There are 61 clubs in New Jersey, 30 clubs in just eastern PA. And paddle, like I said, is attracting a lot of tennis players into the game. So the decline that you're seeing on your turf courts in tennis will easily be playing paddle. And that's where they're going. That's what they're playing back home. But now, with the ability to play it here in Stone Harbor, I think you've got a home run going to do that. And almost every club in PA, New Jersey, and Delaware has paddle as part of their program for racket sports. So I tried to talk fast to get it all in here because I know I don't have a lot of time. But I have brought some folks from my hometown, and they are all longtime, decades-long residents of Stone Harbor, and that play paddle, their whole families play paddle. And, you know, if you'd like to hear from them, they would love to tell you how, you know, what kind of passion and support they have in doing this. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Actually, I do, Tom. Since you're an Avalon resident, have you tried to put courts at Avalon?
Yes, I have. I went to Avalon, and I put a big package together just like this, a presentation. I called the Parks and Rec person, and I said, here's what I'd like to do. Would you entertain doing this in Avalon? And they said, yeah, we can put it on the agenda for you. But to tell you the truth, here's what you're looking at, Tom. And this is before I had a chance to present. I just explained the sport to them. And he said, you know, I don't know the sport. And if I don't know it, my council won't know it. If my council doesn't know it, it won't get voted for. Here's what you have going for you. Tennis is a declining sport. We all know that. So we are looking for other things, but, you know, my not knowing it will make it so that it probably won't get looked at. And I said, wow, just because you don't, you don't know it, doesn't mean you can't look at it. And if I show you the viability of it, if I show you the demographics, if I show you letters from people, you know, I showed them 300 letters that I got in a couple of weeks of people who said, hey, I'm a resident here in Seven Mile Island. I'd love to play. Could you please take us in? I couldn't even get a call back after I submitted the proposal. Like, not only was it not on the agenda, I couldn't get them to actually even say we're not interested. They wouldn't even respond to emails and calls, called the mayor, nothing. I got no calls back. So somebody said, you know, Stone Harbor's pretty open-minded, you know, about a lot of things. They brought pickle and the rest of it.
Is that funny?
Yeah.
But anyway, so I brought it, you know, I brought it to, I wanted to bring it to the attention of Stone Harbor. And, you know, so far, I've gotten a lot of ears to listen. And hopefully, you know, if it makes sense, I'd love to see it come to me.
I was interested to hear reference to Conestoga because I graduated from Conestoga.
That's great.
And grew up playing paddleball younger. And back then, it was a raised.
Back then? How far back then?
Yeah. It was, it was, it was some time ago, for sure. But I agree with you. It really is a very, very fun game, family, social. One of the differences that I'm hearing from you that's different from when we played as a family, it was a winter sport.
Yes.
And so we played in the winter when we weren't playing tennis. Also, it was a raised platform.
Yes.
And also it had lights.
Yes.
So it sounds like the facilities have changed slightly?
So there will be lights, but there's, there won't be a need for the raised platform anymore. And you're absolutely right. It started as a winter sport in the mid-Atlantic, and that's, you know, where it got a lot of attention. But the sport became so popular, people wanted to play during the off-season, so to speak, in the warmer months. And they actually have developed a ball that is dead and plays like it does in the winter. And now, you can see nationally, there are spring leagues, summer leagues, and they're all over the place now. So they play, you know, full season, year-round now. And I play all year-round. So, you know, that thing that I looked forward to in the winter is now a year-round sport for me.
It's good to hear.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Good question. So what was pickleball? When pickleball came to Stone Harbor, there was national organizations that had ambassadors, and they helped beginners become acclimated to a sport, and so on and so forth. Does this have a similar organization in like pickleball that helps beginners or those who are not familiar with the sport? Or is it more along the lines of what we have to do with tennis, where we have pro who handles the tennis, but we've got volunteers handling our pickleball? How would somebody who has no familiarity with this sport, if we had this facility, what would we do so we can teach them this sport?
I'd actually draw one of those ambassadors with me. Okay, that's Keith Studding, like a longtime Stone Harbor resident. He actually used to be on MAPDA before.
Okay. So can you talk to that?
The programs can go a bunch of ways. I think you're going to have so many residents that already know the sport that are always welcoming new players. And one of the things we do, we belong to the same country club, we have nights where we invite all of the new players to come. And all of the members that are more seasoned will work with them and get them started. You know, if you already have a tennis pro, you know, we can certainly work with that tennis pro if he wants to make additional income in teaching paddle, you know, during times where he has free time. And can work with him with one of the pros from New Jersey or from the Philadelphia area. And, or if he wanted to come to our area. And that's, that's how a lot of the pros get started in the Philadelphia area. They come being tennis pros but not knowing anything about paddle. Then they realize there's all this money they can make, and so they basically learn how to teach the sport.
The other thing that we can do is we can run clinics, which are very, very popular in paddle. Where we will take a day and say, look, come on out, we'll run a clinic, we'll show you the basics. And it's a sport that you can fairly quickly get good at, which is, the big problem with tennis is that, you know, for somebody to have a rally, to tend back and forth, it takes a lot of skill. Well, because the ball is contained in the court, that's why high schoolers run it so much. Because it's not as difficult, and they can be having fun right away. So we can actually run a number of few clinics of people who will be happy to go in there.
Is it to you similar to pickleball where you're like in a, you know, and I'm just speaking from, you know, because I'm not, I don't know much about tennis. I just have seen the evolution of pickleball where you've got your beginners and your intermediates and your advanced. And you're kind of placed in a category and you have time slots. Is it similar in that?
Very similar. And it's actually more similar to tennis. Where, you know, you know how tennis is like a, you're either a three-oh or a four-five or a three-five? That's how they play.
Okay.
It's very similar, but much to your point, you know, intermediate, you know, beginners, advanced, and then pro. There's a similar breakdown of players.
Do you jest too? Do people just rent the court and then they jest?
Yes, absolutely, that's all they do. They go, much like tennis, you say, I want to book a court for either ninety minutes or sixty minutes. They get friends together and they play. And a lot of players will go to clinics because they want to improve their skills. No matter where you are on the spectrum in platform tennis, you want to improve, get better.
So it can be similar to tennis where you have a pro when you book your lessons, so to speak, in that?
Absolutely.
For, okay.
And that's where the pros would do clinics, like maybe at a kid's clinic, or a women's clinic, or a men's clinic, or a mixed clinic. And they can grab six to ten players at one time and give them an introduction or get them to the next level.
And how many courts is a customer, are you, for like, if we were to have it one location? Two, four?
At most, at most clubs, it's four courts, right? But MAPDA will tell you that you need a minimum of two courts to start a program. And that's why they're interested in the funding. Because they want to bring paddle to places that don't have paddle. And they really need to help fund the construction of programs like that. So two is a great start, you know, and based on popularity, we'd probably be standing here again some time in a few months. Ask if you have more courts available. But I think you'll see that progression.
Yeah, I would say every club in the last ten years that has built two courts has wished they built four.
Okay.
So they've either built two more, or they're in the process of getting funding to build two more. Nobody kind of stands at two, but I think it's the way to start, right? Get it acclimated. You almost want people to be waiting, right? To say, oh, I can't get a court. Then you've built in a kind of a permanent sort of demand for the sport.
Oh, and what was first brought to my attention, it was a raised platform that was heated. And all of that is not, not anything we would be looking for here?
Well, I, you know, we could, but, you know, I think, you want to say something?
I just want to interrupt real fast. For those of you who lived in Stone Harbor, grew up in Stone Harbor, there was a house on Ninety-Nine Street.
Yes.
Torn down, and it was always this cage. And I drove across the street and I was always like, what is this? We've got a something crazy. That was paddle tennis. So it had the hard ground, wires around it, it looks like many tennis courts. So for those of you that know where that was, that was paddle court.
And I think we geared this towards a summer. So while you have the decking of the heaters if you're playing in the winter. And we didn't think that the parks are open during the winter, so there's no need to heat the courts or brush snow off it. If we're not going to be using.
There's certain few months that Stone Harbor is really under snow, I mean, really under snow. And others are deep under snow, I mean. We would extend what would happen, what we will see though, is beyond September first, through probably November, December, you'd see much more people still coming down because they can stay here and play paddle. Because that's a great time to play. And you probably see people come earlier, like in April, a bigger amount of people coming earlier. A lot of people come earlier, so they can come down and play as well. So I will tell you, I'm an athlete, I play three, five times a week. I tend to always have that angst, I love coming down here, but I can't play paddle down here. So if I have the ability to play paddle down here, I come on ball.
Well, where's the closest facility?
I think there's a rundown court in White.
That's the closest in Atlantic County, Kinnick County.
This would be, this would, it would become a mega of the short that, now that's a very paddle-centric view of this. But, you know, it would still be, it would still be a great.
Okay. So one of the thoughts is that my team, and then a team consists of eight people. You tend to travel September, October, before preseason, if you will. And there are courts in Nantucket, and there are courts out in Jersey, and there are courts in other places. Teams want to travel, they want to contract a three or four day commitment with their pro. This could be the South Jersey destination for that. If you ride, we're homeowners, so it's easy to come down with your team, you can stand your house, stay in two houses, work with your pro for two days, you're on the court for three or four hours at a time. You take a break there on the beach, come back and hit some more. It could be one of those things that, to put us on the map in a bigger picture. And then a way to look at the sport as well to extend the season.
And that's great. And the last thing I'll leave you with, I talk about this here with all my friends. I go to a paddle company, with a four-time national champion, I go to Park City, it's a destination camp to stay in. It's like have five hours a day, it's like having Tiger Woods helping you with your golf game.
Jeez, oh man.
Because they have the money to do it right now.
And you do the same thing here. They run these camps, you know, here where.
Start talking on the phone.
The thing that's interesting about paddle court, it's a sport that's trying to generate twenty thousand dollars. Do you, as a conservative, we have five tennis courts that are generating eighty thousand dollars. It would be very nice to raise that income stream to teach graduate tennis.
To that point, do you have any idea of what the current utilization of the existing tennis courts happened to be at Ninety-Sixth?
I think we could get that, Tina.
Tina.
Tina does.
Really underutilized. Ninety-Sixth Street is severely underutilized because of the surface of that. My tennis pro could need to give away one. Everybody wants to be at Eighty-second, on the hard surface. So I think because of the surface at Ninety-Sixth Street, the tennis courts are severely underutilized.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you.
Could you put a percentage of utilization on it? Is it fifty percent, seventy percent, twenty percent?
I would say less.
How much?
Less than that. I would say, we sell, I would say a third about. I think on Ninety-Sixth Street, I think that we see, on average, four people a day.
Wow.
Yeah. Ninety-Sixth Street is very severely underutilized. And I, I mean, I have, I have brought that to the attention when I was giving my revenue reports. So right now, pickleball brings in about twenty-six thousand dollars for the pickleball program, which is great, and it's growing. But when we did a report, Ninety-Sixth Street, those courts and rental fees, it's around a thousand to two thousand dollars for the summer.
For the whole season.
For the whole season.
And how many courts are there?
Five. And I would say at most, two of them are used at the same time. And it's mostly during the mornings, and it's the same for elderly women that love that court because of the surface. But other than that.
The surface.
Oh, way older than that. So there's, they're, I mean, they're traditionally there every morning, so I would hate to take the facility away from them. But they are the only ones that are using it. So I think realistically with this coming in, especially that we do have the facility, I mean, I think that would be a great, a great location for it.
And you already in Recreation and Tourism saw this.
Correct.
Yes. Mr. King came and presented to us, and we wanted the full council to see his exceptional presentation. Thank you very much, Mr. King.
Yes, I appreciate it. It's, even looking back into Miranda's notes from previous, it was even put in there that it would be, it's not cost-effective to even have an attendant down at Ninety-Nine.
Right, I remember that, that it was, right.
That's how underutilized it is, that we're paying someone to work, run that office, but no one's coming in to rent those courts. If anything, it's a convenience to have someone down at Ninety-Sixth Street because you're handing out the bocce balls and basketballs for rent, and then keep an eye on shuffleboard. But other than that, I think that the tennis is severely underutilized for sure, absolutely.
Interesting.
Thank you very much, Tina. Do you want to stay at the podium? This is Tina Prickett, who is our Exceptional Recreation Director. And Tina, could you talk a little about the resolution for the fees for recreation that you have upcoming?
Can I, can I just cut you off one second, please? So let's just bring this around, and what do we, do we want to move forward and get more information on this? Do we want to put it back in the Recreation and Tourism Committee? How do we want to, how do we want to proceed from here?
Well, I guess we're all in favor of it. I mean, I am, I think it's a great idea.
Start exploring how much the true costs are, perhaps, and things of that nature?
Yes.
Yeah, whatever committee would do.
Right, because we would need to look into more because of the surface. It's not like it is at Eighty-second Street where you can just now transfer it. It is an artificial turf surface, so I think that there would be some.
You'd have to re-surface.
Yes, in my eyes, I think there will be some extra cost that would go into tearing that up. But if we could accommodate both, because it does only traditionally start with two. And then I'm sure those four ladies would be very thankful that we're going to keep one more. But then moving forward, we still have, if it is successful, as they're saying, and, you know, projecting, then we do have the space to add two more courts if that is a direction. Because it's not technically taking away tennis from Stone Harbor because we do have, we have the great hard true courts that are used every single morning down at Eighty-second Street. Those courts are, just because of the surface, it's just in higher demand. So I think with that surface on Ninety-Sixth Street, I think that it would be a good direction to go in and see what kind of, financially, how much money it would cost.
And if anybody on council was interested in actually seeing a court, Morgate would be the closest thing to actually seeing. Don't even, don't even do that. Okay.
I take it to Ninety-Ninth Street. I'm not intending to all of the people, all of those.
Okay. So if you want to follow up with Mr. King and.
I will.
And see, we can see whatever, and even work with the engineer, perhaps, on some of it.
Very helpful of that.
Yep.
Okay.
That's not a bad point.
Okay.
Was that return on investment, twenty thousand dollars a year per court?
So he can see what.
For both courts?
Yes, and that's, I think, the conservative number, that's rent only enough, five times a day. You know, and I think it would be rented a lot more.
And what was, what was the cost again of?
It's a hundred and five with twenty-one thousand dollar contribution from both the national and the local chapter of the American Paddle Tennis Association. And then some private funding that we would try to raise capital for. I think that we used to borrow with about eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand, yeah.
But, you know, there would have to be electricians that tap into the same electricity that the whole court uses.
Yeah.
You have to have like? There's no tennis court right now that does not have court.
You don't have to, but a lot of people like playing in that.
Okay, because we are, traditionally, our times right now are, our courts open at eight, they run through twelve. And then twelve to four is a free play where we don't charge for anything.
You recharge now.
And that as well, and that, a lot of that is based on, that's because it was an open space project, and we were mandated to have free play, which we would not, under these circumstances, be mandated to do that.
A lot of it too is, that's the hottest point of the day, and no one wants to.
Right. So if the paddle tennis folks want to be really, really hot and pay us, we'll let them.
Absolutely.
So it's where, and so it'll be looked, continued to look at through Beach and Rec. And we can also look at, like you're saying, grant money from national organizations and so on. And I'm sure that you're happy to lend your expertise to Jen Gansimer, to continue to look. And like I said, consult with the engineer, because lots of times, as soon as government gets involved, costs go up.
It won't be great, we'll get that.
Okay, okay.
All righty. Tina, do you want to speak about the upcoming resolution for the fees for recreation?
Yes. So I had brought up, I think that this was traditionally in the past. So our clinics, if you sign up for a basketball clinic, you, you get all the clinics. So it's, you pay per clinic, but then if you sign up for a basketball league, which is sixty dollars, you also get the clinic, a basketball clinic for free. So what people were doing, because it makes sense, so they were just signing up for the basketball league and then not showing up for the basketball league and showing up for the clinics because it's twenty dollars cheaper. So we, I just, I talked with the rec committee, and then what we're going to do is, it's just going to be an additional add-on fee. And that's going to help also because when people sign up for the league and they just randomly show up for the clinic because it's traditionally included for free, I don't have a roster. So now my, you know, my counselors are, you know, they have a roster of twenty people that are supposed to be showing up. But traditionally in the past, if you sign up for this league, you can just show up whenever you would like for a free basketball clinic. So now that twenty turned into forty kids on the court. Well, that's not really conducive to, for safety reasons, I don't, I need to have more counselors available because we should realistically have one for every ten. So to keep accountability as far as creating a roster as well, and financially making sense, I had just suggested that if you sign up for the league, it'll just be twenty dollars, and then you can also get your clinic included in that. So essentially, if you pay eighty dollars, which is the cost of the clinic, you're also getting the league and the clinic. So it's just a twenty-dollar increase for league participants to get that clinic in addition to. So that was my only record, my only change for twenty-twenty summer.
So in a nutshell, the leagues are not going to include the clinics?
Free clinics.
Free clinics?
Correct.
Okay.
And I spoke with a lot of the counselors, and it was a big headache because of those numbers would fluctuate, and they had no idea because we would, every day we print out a roster and they take attendance. And there would just be kids that just are so used to being like, oh, well, this is free, so they just show up. So just from a safety standpoint too, it is good to add that in there.
Okay.
So that was the only addition of the fees.
All righty, thank you, Tina.
Did you want me to do my?
Oh, absolutely. You have more information for us. Wonderful.
So this week starts our five-week Mayor's Wellness Campaign. So what we decided, Mayor Drew and I, we wanted to focus on jump-starting your health. So that was just actually processing the feedback from last year, from years prior, that eight weeks was potentially too long. The participation started to dwindle down at the end. So we wanted to condense this and do a five-week program. All the information is found on the Borough's Facebook, the Recreation's Facebook, and then also our website. And I think we did a press release as well, right, Atlantic City Press? So all the information, and there's tons of flyers in the rec. So a lot of people come for, sit in fit classes and they're able to grab that information.
And we tried to gear it towards the last day is the first day of spring.
Correct.
So we're kind of like that last month of winter, and we're calling it Jump Start Your Health. So it'll be five consecutive Thursday evenings, four consecutive Monday morning walks.
And yoga.
Is the program. And then there's a yoga offered by actually one of our longtime residents, Nancy Kraft. She'll be offering a free yoga on Monday mornings. So it's actually, it's only five weeks long, and we figure that we can really get people's attention for five weeks. You start, you do see the participation start to drop off after a while. And we're also going to be working with Nick Ellisano, who is going to be working through Cape Regional. So it should be a more, it'll be a shorter program, and I think that we'll get more involvement that way, and also just the timing, then it takes you right into spring. And participants are going to walk away with a journal and a toolbox of ways where they can continue on from that point.
Correct. So we have, we have Nick coming in, he's going to kind of give like a, an introduction to Jump Start Your Health, how to set realistic goals, how to keep them. We also have a nutritionist coming in, which I didn't think that it was going to be that difficult to find one. But they're, they're in very high-demand nutritionists these days. So we, I have a nutritionist just by going to the local CrossFit. She also does nutrition for, you know, top-end athletes, so I think it's going to be great. So she's going to be doing a Nutrition 101. And then I'm going to be leading a lecture that is making your home a gym, ways that you can work out without needing a gym membership. Which I think is huge for people that maybe not, don't have the accessibility to leave their house. And then we have another nutritionist coming in, and we're going to do a hands-on meal prep class, which I think is going to be great. I'm definitely going to be there for that one. And then the last is going to, we're going to do like a wrap-up with Nick and kind of a reflection where people can maybe see their eating habits and try to analyze. You know, every time I talk to my sister on the phone, I end up eating a pint of ice cream afterwards. And maybe addressing that some, like their behaviors actually reflect in their life, so. So I think that this is going to be great, especially for me, you know, this is kind of my first, two feet into this. And then on the last page, the information that's available are actually all of the classes. And once you put them into a list, there's actually a laundry list of free classes that are accessible between us and Avalon, that is just free for your fitness.
There's a lot of activities on the Seven Mile Island at no cost.
Right.
Between the two recreation departments.
And it's all age-accommodating too. I know, I sent this out to my lacrosse team and I said, get to it, you have no excuse now.
Yeah.
That'd be great. And then we also, after, in the committee, we added a Zumba class on Saturdays as part of our summer programming.
Oh, that's nothing now. That's summer you're talking?
This is the summer, yeah.
Okay.
So we just approved adding the Zumba. And then we also added a yoga camp for kids and adults. So I know that a lot of our camps are more fitness and geared towards the kids. So I thought that this will be a great addition to add yoga. It's kind of a non-competitive, add that to our programming to kind of encompass everybody, to, you know, really include non-athletic people. Because a lot of people come to me and then our chess clamp, our chess camp is very in high demand because there are parents that are a little bit realistic and they don't want to keep sending them to the clinics where these kids are just not having fun. They're picking grass and seeing whether the wind's blowing. And then lastly, all marketing materials are updated, have been submitted to. The publication Seven Mile Times has all the updates of everything that's going to be happening this summer. So we are in more than full summer swing right now.
Good.
And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Great, Tina.
Next, we have our Tourism Director, Jenny Olson, and she's going to speak about a resolution for fees for special events.
Yeah, um, excuse me. We are requesting some changes to the timeframe for the, excuse me. This is not a good day for me. I'm sorry. We're requesting some changes to the timeframe and the application review fees on the special events application. This is really to encourage people to make some more timely applications. What's happening, what, what has happened with a few organizations, not everyone, but we want to get away from the applications that are sent in where we have to make that decision, to hear about it in the work session and make the decision for the approval in the same day. We just don't want that to happen. So we're increasing the timeframe and the fees. So we previously had, they could apply 60, 30, or 15 days ahead or prior. Now we would like to increase that and go 90 days prior. And that would stay at the $50 application review fee. The next would be 60 days prior. That would be $100. That's increasing from 75. And then next would be 30 days prior and that would increase to 250 if that was the case. Just so you know, though, most applications do arrive prior to 90 days. So for most people, this wouldn't really change, just a handful that come in at the last minute. So we really want to, we want to prevent that. Excuse me. The other change, there is an additional change for some schools. The change, we want to change the school use fields from $1,500 per season. It'll be still per season, per sport, rather than, in the past, it was $1,500 and then an additional $750 if they had another sport. This would just be $15 per season, per sport. And then we are going to add a fee for the men's softball league of $250. In the past, they have paid no fee, just the application review fee. And the Rec still has to groom all the fields, still do a lot of work for them.
So that's not per team, correct?
No, the whole league.
That's just for their, okay.
That would be the whole league. I don't know if anyone had any questions on that. But I have some special events applications, if you want me to go over those now.
Please.
Okay. So I do have some applications for special events in circulation. And by the way, all of them are, were submitted, were submitted originally prior to the 90 days. The first one is the Stone Harbor Chamber of Commerce Shiver Event. That's actually Saturday, March 21st. This is their annual shiver event. It's sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. It's a fundraiser for family promise of Cape May County. They expect about 500 to 1,000 participants. It could be up to 1,000, but only about 500 actually participate. The event will start at noon on Saturday with a parade. It's followed by a pre-shiver rally at the parking lot at the Women's Civic Club. The polar plunge part of it would start about 1:15. They're requesting a brief closure of 96th Street during the parade, which is from about 12 to 12:30. That route starts from the rear of Fred's Tavern from the parking lot. It turns right onto Third Avenue and then makes a left on 96th Street down and finishes at the Women's Civic Club. They will require the assistance from the Police Department with the parade route for crowd control and safety. They'll need some new parking signage. That's requested at 96th Street at the beachfront at Sandpiper and a section of the beachfront lot. Also, on the west side of Third Avenue between 95th and 94th Street and on the east end block of 95th Street in front of St. Mary's Church. They are requesting public works set up this stage and some lifeguard stands for their judging at the Women's Civic Club. The Fire Department EMS staff should be available for support. They do contact the Cape May Dive Team to be on-site for the event. And the changer, the chamber will be, will have their own volunteers monitoring the crowd, but will be relying on the dive team and the Fire Department for safety and the police for any disturbances. They have also submitted their insurance certificates for this. And the application is, has already circulated through all those arrangements and it's been signed off. I don't know if anyone has any questions on the shiver, but it's, you know, it's an annual event.
I just thought of this and I'm not sure it's still in effect, but I can remember when the first ones were done, they needed a permit from, and JT left. They, I believe they still need a permit from the Coast Guard.
I don't know if she's, I did have a note from Marnie that they have, that she still owes me the New Jersey Police-Marine Event Permit, so.
Now, there's something on the last page that says still to come?
Yeah.
Site map of parade route. Shiver showdown at Women's Civic Club and a New Jersey Police-Marine Event Permit.
Okay, I thought it was the Coast Guard.
I think that's maybe the one we're, I'll, I'll check with her.
That sounds like...
I can check with JT as well. The other applications that I have, we have the Stone Harbor Fitness Retreats. This is, there are two separate applications just because it's, it's two different dates. One is on May 16th, the other is on October 9th. This is annual as well. And it's a request to hold five yoga sessions at the 104th Street Beach. They are at 6:00 AM, 9:00 AM, 10:00 AM, 2:00 PM, and 8:00 PM on those two days. No other Borough resources are required for that. Her, she'll submit her insurance certificate upon approval. She'll send me an insurance certificate, because it's usually just for the, for specific days. It's just for a one-day. And then the final, I have the Wetlands Institute Summer Celebration. That's July 25th. They're just requesting the use of the 80th Street Marina Parking Lot, a portion of it, for the valet service for their fundraiser at the Icona. And I have the insurance certificate has been provided for that one as well. And that's also an annual event. If anyone had any questions on those.
And just a suggestion that we reach out to people who have these annual events and to let them know there's been a change in the fees, if we can be proactive about that.
I can. Right now, the, the application still has last year's information on it, the 2020. So as soon as this changes, I can reach out to everybody that...
Yeah, because we pretty much know who they are every year and let them know. Okay.
And the only other thing I have going on right now is this week I'll be mailing out all the farmers market applications to last year's participants. And then we'll, once we hear from them, we'll see if we have any, any room for new vendors.
Okay. No proposed change in size of the farmers market, everything like status quo, number of vendors-wise?
I mean, we can't get any bigger on, you know.
Okay.
We've moved to a different site.
Okay, good.
All right. Sorry about...
Thank you, Jenny. So then those three special events will come back next meeting to be voted on. Okay. As well as everything else, the fees for the recreation, the fees for the special events. We'll bring that forward in two weeks. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else for Recreation and Tourism?
Madam Mayor, that concludes our report.
That's a lot of stuff. Natural Resources, Josie?
Yes, Natural Resources. We're going to have a presentation tonight for the Bird Sanctuary. We are required to have a fragmities control. This has been presented to Natural Resources and now it will be presented to the Council. And Michael Raymond is here to explain it. It's detailed. A lot of work has gone into this and we welcome him back to Stone Harbor.
Oh, this is going here?
Do we have any of these?
Oh, I'm getting up. Is this a PowerPoint? No.
No.
They should have been submitted to everyone. Does everyone have the map?
Everyone has one? If not, I have a couple extras.
I can pass them up. Yeah, we have them. I have them.
Let me bring it with me. Another good map right here. This here is like the...
You got one?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're sharing. Yeah, thank you. You need a map? I need a map. You want to share?
I would like a map, yes. Soon we can share that.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone has one? All right, excellent. So we've been working with Lenore and the Wetlands Institute, the Bird Sanctuary with the Borough, on a plan to do an habitat enhancement project specifically focused on eliminating invasive species, which are primarily Common Reed at the moment. There's some patches of purple new stripe, but the predominant invasive species is Common Reed. And so what's in front of everybody is the plan that shows the general permit aspect of it and the proposed treatment areas. A little background, so in order to do this type of effort, anywhere in New Jersey, you need approval from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Land Use Regulation Program. They have a variety of permit vehicles to facilitate these activities. In this case, that permit is a General Permit 16, which is Habitat Enhancement Activities. Good news about that permit application, there's just no fee associated with it because it is a restoration effort. It's viewed as, as a, as an uplift project by the state. The state likes to see these projects and they often encourage these types of applications so that we can, you know, return a lot of these areas to their original conditions prior to invasive species taking over. So on the plan in front of you, you'll notice there's a variety of, of areas that are slated for, for treatment. And I guess the easiest way to point them out is the areas that are shaded throughout are where we are proposing to treat Common Reed. If that's not clear, I can certainly go into more detail. The page number two, which has the various colors, the two colors you see there are really related to the location of the proposed treatment areas. The blue areas are areas that are within existing wetlands, whereas the orange hatched area are areas that are within what's called a wetland buffer adjacent to the areas where wetlands are currently mapped. Those are the areas that are focused of the application. Access would be off of, there's a couple locations. One would be the existing parking lot, where that would be, all be done by foot traffic in the tidal wetland area. And the other access point is off of, not sure which street that is. I don't have it labeled in front of me. Third? Okay. Off of Third, where we would essentially just remove split rail fence, the posts in one spot, gain access and put them right back in. No, no permanent impacts whatsoever with those access points. The type of machinery that is utilized, only in the freshwater wetland portion, which is separated by that berm that is currently a walking path, is a machine called the Marshmaster. It's a very specialized piece of equipment, only a handful are even in this country at the moment. It's made out of aluminum, so it's extremely lightweight. It does not leave behind any sort of like evidence, like an excavator, you go, well, what happened here? It's pretty tame in terms of what it does. Essentially, it will ride through the frag. There'll be someone sitting on top of this machine with a spraying mechanism to treat the Common Reed. And there's a blue dye associated with that, so you know what's been treated. So you just keep on moving through as you do the treatment effort. Its weight is about the same as a human footprint per square foot. It's extremely light machine. It actually floats if it's in water. And it is used for those purposes as well, not needed here. Again, that will not be used in the tidal wetland portion. That will only be done by foot traffic and backpack applications. We'll have a hose running from that parking lot. It's about a 400-foot-long hose to access those areas on the back end of the tidal wetlands. I'm sure there's going to be some questions on this. I mean, it's, there's a lot we can cover. I don't know if there's any specific areas we'd like to talk about.
The time of the year that we're talking about?
Yes. So we've had some preliminary conversations with the Endangered Species Program down in NJDEP. And it looks like timing restrictions, which are essentially times when you cannot access a site to conduct proposed activities, will extend from early May till the end of June, maybe a little bit later into July. With that kind of restriction, the appropriate time to do this type of work is late August into September timeframe, maybe even early October. It's a perfect time of year to conduct this type of effort. It's standard operating procedure for us to do the majority of our Common Reed treatments during that time of year. So it's actually, kind of works out nicely from the standpoint of timing. You can't do it too early in the year. It won't be effective. And typically, the middle of the summer, not a good time of year for a variety of reasons, especially on a site like this where you have a variety of, of birds and reptiles and turtles making, you know, their life history.
So the fall's the time?
Yeah, late.
Fall's the time. And Ray's asking, how long does it take? How long do you think it'll take to do this?
The treatment process, I would say this is probably a week at max. I don't even know if it would be that long. We would probably wait till after Labor Day just for the ease of, you know, Stone Harbor and summer, you know.
That's a good idea.
It'd probably be a whole lot easier from a planning standpoint and access standpoint. But yeah, I would say no more than a week max would be my estimate.
Questions?
The proposal's got three treatment, it says options year one, year two, year three, but it says 2019. So I'm assuming that'll become 2020.
Correct.
And what happens is you do a treatment and then you see if you've got to do further work? Is that what those optional treatments are about or how, what's that?
So typically, what happens with these types of efforts is the first year is the most intensive and the most labor-intensive, most time-intensive. Typically, very successful, but I've never seen an invasive species treatment program where you didn't have to come in and do follow-up treatments, spot treatments in areas where maybe a little more persistent. It always comes back and every, with each successive year, it's reduced until the native species have an ability to take over that area, to, in other words, eliminate the ability for frag to recolonize.
So if, if you do have to come back, you come back the next year at the same time of year again in the fall and that would be that...
Correct.
Second-year option?
Correct.
Is that something that we, because it's saying optional, is that something we have to commit to out of the gates?
So I've been working with, with Bob on kind of reevaluating that proposal and only focusing on 2020 and not so much 2021, 22, to see where we are each successive year. So I did provide an updated proposal to, to Robert Smith and that essentially addresses just 2020.
Okay, those second-year options aren't on there?
Not on there.
Okay.
I just re-agreed that it'd be better to re-address as needed each time of year.
Yes, and it is in the budget. We budgeted for this. It's something we need to do. And we've been working very diligently ahead of time for this project.
Okay. So then what do we need to do? We need to authorize something?
Yeah, it should be authorized by resolution.
Okay, so we'll bring it back for that formal authorization that first weekend in, first week, first meeting in March. And we'll see that different proposal that you have that doesn't have those two additional, that 4680 and that 3330 then is something that we wouldn't see, correct?
What is the date of the document that you're referring to?
November 26, 2018.
All right, I have the February 12 document in my Dropbox.
That's what I have also. February 12.
Got it.
I also have an agreement, excuse me, that's dated May 17, 2019. I'm assuming we'll get a new agreement.
Yes, the original agreement was for the preparation of the plans you have in front of you and the permit application that is ready to be submitted once we move past.
So those dates will all be brought up today?
Yes, the updated proposal does not even include what was already approved in that date you referenced.
Okay. Got it. So we'll bring that forward in two weeks.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, first meeting, the first Tuesday in March that will be approved.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next we have LOMAX to do a proposal for our dune vegetation management proposal for number 2, 89th Street.
Yes, correct. Aaron Baker from LOMAX Consulting. So what we have is a new dune vegetation management plan project on the north side of 89th Street on the side of the beach path. This will be the second DVMP project in the borough. The original one was between 115th, 118th Street. That was about three years ago and the project's doing really well. Invasive species have been controlled and the native species that were brought in are doing very well. The 89th Street is a relatively small project. Program has been designed to remove invasive species such as the Japanese black pine from the dune system and to replace them with native species to help keep the dunes stabilized, but to also help provide better habitat for wildlife and a more naturalized environment. So the, does everyone have the copies of the plans? Okay. So figure one is a survey of the Japanese black pine that are in this area. So there's 13 mature trees that would be removed, flush-cut with the ground, so the roots stay in place to help keep the dunes stabilized. And then figure two is the native plants that are going to go back into this area after the trees are removed to help restore the dunes. When the black pine are removed, they tend to leave bare dead zones. There's not very much that can grow under and around the black pine. So we need to fill that in with some vegetation. The vegetation will also be irrigated from the adjacent private property owner who's sponsoring the project. All the funding for the project comes from private property owners. It's usually adjacent property owner. The borough benefits from a restored, naturalized dune. The private property owner, you know, they get a better view of the ocean. That's how the, where the funding comes from for these projects, so there's no cost to the borough.
So the property owner works in concert with the borough and assumes all the cost?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything goes through the borough, so the borough has complete control of planning and implementation. And all the funding for the project is actually stored in escrow account held by the borough. So, you know, they control who gets paid and when as well.
Okay.
Any questions?
This is our second one?
Yes.
Our second one and there might be a third one soon, too.
Yes.
There's a lot of paperwork, a lot of beginning to do it, starting way ahead of the project. So if there's any questions, because I know we have new council members here that have not experienced this, but it's an awesome, it's an awesome project. They are very, LOMAX does a great job on it and the borough doesn't spend any money.
And just for the minutes, could you just say your name again for the record and spell out your last name?
Aaron Baker, A-A-R-O-N, Baker, B-A-K-E-R.
Thank you.
With the LOMAX Consulting Group.
Thank you.
Okay, we have about three more minutes. Are you finished or not?
Yes. Yes, I'm done.
Because I knew we were working on changing part of a contract, but I'm not sure we have that information with us.
The application process?
Yes. Do you have that with you?
I have a copy.
Okay, is it simple?
Want me to touch on it?
Sure.
So when we originally had the DVMP program approved, we had an application process developed on how people would go about applying for one of these projects. We've kind of just updated it based on how things went with the pilot project. So in this, in the revised one, we're establishing the escrow account a little bit earlier in the process as a sort of deposit to keep people involved and interested. And then we also expanded the process to include the maintenance pruning. As part of the program, there's an allowance for very minor maintenance pruning. No topping, no severe damage to the trees or any vegetation, but we didn't have a process in place when the program was first started. So the application process has been expanded to inform people how they would go about applying for this if they wanted to as well.
And your office supervises the prunings and provides the landscapers, correct?
Yes.
Okay. No rogue landscapers coming?
No, yeah, everything is with borough oversight through.
Through you and also, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
I have, we have a couple more minutes and I'd like to share some thoughts since there seems to be a topic that I think that Natural Resources.
Can I just interrupt you one second? Is there anything we have to do to approve this plan?
I think it's all.
All signed, sealed and delivered and we don't have to do anything formal moving forward? Next meeting or anything? Do we have to approve it? Kim shaking her head, yes? Okay, so we'll make sure all that happens for the next meeting. Okay, okay.
So I'd like to make a couple comments about the predator situation that we have. And I'd like to say that these are my thoughts and I think there are others that do agree and they will have that opportunity, I'm sure, to say how they feel. I believe that the question that we have before us about the predator control is do we, as council, wish to maintain and enhance the excellent working relationships that we have spent years establishing with our partners that are both the U.S. Fish and Wildlife and the State Division of Fish and Wildlife. Our stewardship of the Stone Harbor Point, the bird sanctuary, is paramount importance to the borough of Stone Harbor and to many residents, visitors here that value these incredibly rich and distinctive natural resources. I think we all know we're blessed. We have been discussing the predator management component of our responsibilities to manage the endangered and threatened species at the point for about a year now. We brought in these professionals, we asked them questions, we had them explain the science behind the conservation policies and the techniques that they employ. We asked about the feasibility of alternative practices and were provided with all the reasons that they are using these tools and techniques that they do and why relocation is not a humane option. So I believe that the question before us is if we as a council want to take a formal stand to reject their answers and sort of seek an end-around that is not scientifically based and not in the best interest of the animals in question or public health and safety, nor even our neighboring municipalities. So I am going to propose later in this meeting, I propose that we resolve to support our partnering agencies and thank them for their tireless efforts to help us appropriately steward these resources. And I believe that this is in the best interest of the borough of Stone Harbor. The end.
I'll start. I just go back to the statute which allows for exploration of, or excuse me, not exploration, allows for relief in geographical areas where we don't qualify. So other areas have the opportunity to relocate fox to different locations, but we are geographically constrained. And I'm not, I have a hard time understanding how we would jeopardize our relationship. I agree, we have a great relationship, we should maintain that, but how, asking the question, exploring alternatives or relief because we're geographically restricted, how that would jeopardize a relationship? This is all for the good, the common good. Pursuing that and making that effort, I can't see how that would jeopardize any relationship. Asking questions is a good thing. Seeking solutions is a good thing. We're representing people who have come before us and have asked us to do this. We don't just represent ourselves and our own opinions, we represent everyone who's out there in the borough. So it confounds me how seeking alternatives, which alternatives are already provided for, we just don't qualify because we're so darn small. So that's how I see it. Very simple to me.
Anybody else want to just chat at this time?
I also don't see, if any harm does come from this, it shouldn't come. And there's no detriment to having, I always believe we should have as much discussion as possible before we finalize a solution. So I think we should, we should move forward and look at other alternatives. And it may come that there are no alternatives. And if there aren't, then so be it and we move on as we are. And this is not, you know, we're no, at least I don't believe, we're not planning on stopping predator control. We all realize predator control has to happen, it has to be maintained. This is more about disposal of the predator afterwards. And if, like I said, if there's no alternative, if everything's been searched out and there's no alternative, then we continue doing what we're doing. And in the interim, we continue doing what we're doing. I think we all realize how important the point is to the town.
May I speak, Madam Mayor?
Sure, of course. I'd just like to say that I'm very grateful to our partner organizations. And in this great country that we live in, we have tremendous resources available to us. And the challenges that our community faces are not unique to our community, but have been dealt with across the nation and in our U.S. territories. And I'm interested in learning more about how other communities have dealt with the same issues that we're dealing with. What are the alternatives? What are, what are other solutions? And I believe that's worth exploring.
I've considered this discussion, this situation, long and hard. And my decision is to remain doing what we're doing. I do not think that it makes any sense at all to involve Congressman Van Drew in this project. He is not an expert in wildlife management. He will create a situation with, within the fish and wildlife, both in New Jersey and in the state of, the United States Fish and Wildlife Service. That is, someone said to me over the weekend, when you have a congressional inquiry into a particular area, it becomes a Chinese fire drill in the office of those people who are charged with implementing the solution to the problem. There have been a number of different letters that I received this week from passionate people about the point. And the unique feature of the point and the wildlife that is there that has been protected and has been protected and continues to be protected is very important for the uniqueness of Stone Harbor's attraction as a wildlife center. To allow or to ask Congressman Van Drew to spend his valuable resources in seeking an alternative to what we already believe we know is no alternative. The fish and wildlife people have been very clear in telling us that you cannot relocate foxes out of this area into another area. They said quite clearly in their meeting with us that what will happen is the animals in that particular area where they are moved will attack and kill the interlopers into their territory. There's no good answer to this. And in thinking about the proportion of the numbers of foxes that are euthanized, we're talking about two or three a season at most. State of New Jersey requires, and if anybody's interested, there is a brochure that has been put out by Fish and Wildlife that discusses this subject at great length. There is also an American Veterinary Medicine Association booklet on euthanasia. And just to summarize it very quickly, I will tell you that both the state of New Jersey and the federal government require that euthanasia be done in as humane method as possible. So as far as alternatives are concerned, I think that what we're doing right now is the correct way to handle the situation, to handle the problem, to protect the point. And that's really the objective of this whole program, is to protect our point. I conclude.
I'm conflicted with this also and have done a lot more reading and talking with people about the programs and also meeting with the people last year individually that are responsible for overseeing the programs. And I found them to be very competent, extremely passionate, to be stewards of their responsibilities for maintaining the point. So I think maybe that one of the things that I just would like to get a better appreciation of is if there are alternatives, what is the best way to pursue what those alternatives are? I personally don't think that enlisting the support of Congressman Van Drew would necessarily be the best avenue to explore getting other alternatives, if there are other alternatives.
And I'll just take a minute and then we'll, then we'll end the work session. I think one of the things that. I think one of the things that everybody has forgotten is this isn't just the point, this is nuisance wildlife throughout the entire municipality. This isn't just the point. So, throughout the state of New Jersey, there is places that are built out just like we are, and they're handling nuisance wildlife through pest control and animal control with no options, just like we are. So, it's not just that one issue that we have to, that is the point. And of course, the, I think everybody agrees, we need to protect the point, and we are, as we said two weeks ago when we were getting ready to put this, you know, up for a vote this week, the intention is to continue predator control as is, nothing changes, protects the point. Then, see if we can find alternatives, and the reason why we're enlisting the help of Congressman Van Drew is because one of our constituents went and asked for his help because she felt that we were not listening. That's how we ended up at Van Drew. So, this governing body didn't say, hey, Congressman, can you help us? One of our constituents felt she wasn't being heard. So, she went to the congressman, and he, and he essentially said, I'll listen, just get your governing body on board and I'll listen. So, that's essentially where we're at, and this is not just the point, it's nuisance wildlife as well. It's every bit of wildlife on this island. If that ends up in a trap, its only option is you kill it. Yet, if you go over the bridge, there's options. They are being relocated. You just can't do it within our geographical boundaries, and you have to relocate within the geographical boundaries of the township or municipality where it was trapped. So, it isn't just the point. So, just that being said, it's a, it's a, it's a bigger picture, and the guidelines, and I know that I've said this before and I've been criticized for it, however, I don't think that the geographical boundaries, the municipal boundaries, the township boundaries are science, they're geographical boundaries. Because if it's permitted over the bridge, and that's not inhumane, yet if we do it and take it out of this town, it's inhumane. It just doesn't, it doesn't follow. So, that being said, of course, the point, we must remove predators. I think everybody up here agrees with that. We have to do that, and we will do that. And if there is another way to do that that is more humane, that is non-lethal, then we would like to do that, if we can. If we can't, then we have done our due diligence, and we have answered our constituency, and we have listened to the people who say to us, can't you please just try? And that's how I see it. We may be in this same exact place six months from now with no options, but we can at least answer our people saying, we tried, we talked to other scientists, we talked to other people, we talked to wildlife specialists. I'm sorry, but this is the only answer that we have. And we may be there, and as long as everybody understands that may be where we end up, but in, in the interim, we answered those who asked us to provide more information. And at the same time, not jeopardize the point, not jeopardize any endangered or threatened species. In the capacity that we are doing it right now, it will continue.
Don't you think that if there were an acceptable alternative, that we, we would have heard from Fish and Wildlife, the state of New Jersey, and the federal Fish and Wildlife people?
The guidelines state we can't relocate out of this jurisdiction. So, here's, I thought, in my opinion, I would think that the folks at Fish and Wildlife would be just as anxious to have a non-lethal method as we are. Because I don't think they got into their business to kill animals. So, I think that if there is something that can be found, and if we can just not say it's the way it's always been done, if we can just look at it, nobody's asking for anything more, nobody's disrespecting anybody. I, and, and I think to listen to other people, to listen to your critics, that's what helps you grow. That's what solidifies your position. Because you start to look more, you start to look around, and you say, well, is there credence to what they're saying? Let me look at this. And I, I don't know how that hurts if along the same vein, we do not change what we're doing. So, I don't know how it can hurt.
I'm not saying not to listen, I'm saying that don't, why wouldn't you go directly to Fish and Wildlife and say, what are the other alternatives that we can do?
Because we're being told there aren't any, but yet, next town over, there is. So, in my mind, there is something we can do, we can get those guidelines changed.
I guess the difference is I have been on natural resource now for nine years. Nobody else wants it. And have seen and watched and met these people. And I do believe that if there was a better way, Frank, it would have been done, or it would be done, and that they have done their due diligence. Because I agree with Judy, no one wants to kill an animal. However, what our responsibility is, and people seem to take it out of where it should be in my mind. We have endangered species, and they don't even have to be endangered in my mind, because they're down there on the point. The point is for the birds, it always has been. That was a thing in the past, save the point for the birds. It is our responsibility to protect them. The eggs are laid, the fox come, they're gone, and a hundred of them can happen in X amount of minutes, they're gone. That is our responsibility. No one is thinking about the fact that these little creatures down there don't have a chance unless we protect them.
I think everybody's thinking of that, because we're not stopping predator control. We're not stopping what we're doing. It's not going to stop.
I did not.
Status quo.
I did not interrupt you. I'm finished, thank you.
No, I'm just saying, but you're, you're suggesting that we're, we're putting things at risk when we're not changing what we're doing, so we're not changing anything here. We're not changing anything at this point. And that's, I get, that's the only thing where I 100% understand your point, and, and I, and I've been dealing with this longer. If you look at that conservation management plan in 2008, I am referenced in that plan. So, in 2008, I was working with these folks. That was 12 years ago, and that's when the plan was written. I started working with them in 2004, and again, I'm referenced in that plan. And in that plan, for those who haven't read it, it states that they'll relocate. It states it in our plan. And then, when we ask for that relocation, we're told it's not an option, but it is our, it's in our plan. It's in the plan that was adopted in 2008. So, maybe it all needs to look, be looked at? That plan was supposed to be updated every five years, we have yet to update it. So, just some work to do.
I still say I trust them, Frank, that they know the best to do for us, because we do have an incredible working relationship with them now. Back then, not so much.
I agree with you, and I, and I can't answer Judy's comment about what is done in other municipalities. And the question I would ask of the Fish and Wildlife people is, how come they can do it over there and we can't do it here? But that's a, that's a question not to involve Congressman Van Drew, which I think is a horrible waste of his time and his resources to get everybody in the Chinese fire drill in Fish and Wildlife, and believe me, that will happen. They will go crazy with a congressman inquiring about what's going on. Fish and Wildlife should be asked, how come other municipalities can relocate the animals and we cannot?
Exactly.
Okay.
But that, and we've been asking, I think I first started saying this eight months ago. Look at the guidelines.
That may well be, I don't remember that.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, this, this, this whole conversation started April of last year.
I know, I'm not questioning your, your veracity. I am questioning the fact that it has not been done. Is that something natural resources should do, to reach out to Fish and Wildlife and ask about what the, why is it that other municipalities can relocate and we cannot?
That is something they certainly can do, and I think that the answer, which we've had this conversation in the past, is the guidelines prohibit it, that are set down by the DEP.
You, you raised, you raised the issue of other places can do it. My question is, if other places can do it, why can't we do it? And get an answer from Fish and Wildlife.
Okay.
I think the answer to your question is, I don't think we've gotten an answer other than the guidelines say you have to.
I don't think we've asked the question.
Well, that's even worse.
Well, I don't know.
No, that's, I'm just saying we have.
We have not asked the question.
We have since April of last year, yes.
We've asked Fish and Wildlife?
Yes.
Josie, is that true?
I think we have asked, and I think we have been given an answer that this is.
So, what is the answer to the question that how come other communities can do it and we can't? What is the, I mean, you know, this is a question of logic and facts, and we are, we are not dealing with a lot of facts here, we're dealing with a lot of emotion.
And that, but your question, that's the question. That's the question. And in my, the way that I see what the answer is, and I think, and I don't, I think that's how we ended up, a constituent ended up at Van Drew, is because the guidelines from the DEP prohibit you from relocating outside the township of where it was trapped. So, Fish and Wildlife can't make up their own guidelines, they're following the guidelines.
I think it, I think when you involve, like, when we talked the other day, Frank, I think it's true, if you involve a congressional inquiry into something, it becomes like a five-alarm fire. Van Drew's not getting involved in this personally, it's going to be one of his staffers who's going to use Van Drew's letterhead and that, and ask the appropriate questions that Bob puts, should we go that way, that Bob puts in the, in the request for his assistance, and that's what goes to the agency. Then, the agency has to respond to that. Now, sometimes, you know, like you shake the tree and see what falls out, but that letter will get attention, it'll get a lot more attention than Mayor Judy's inquiries back and forth. So, I think it's worth it, we owe it to just, let's see what happens. You know, I mean, Fish and Wildlife get these kind of letters all the time, they'd had their, used to respond to him. He offered to do it, it's not like we solicited him.
Well, we, meaning we, the governing body, didn't solicit him.
Right.
Right. We did not, a constituent did. Anything, if there, if you do have something else, when, when this motion comes forward in the, in the meeting, there's still time, if there's still something that anybody wants to say, there still will be time. So, that being said, that covers the agenda on the work session. So, any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're going to take about a two-minute comfort break, and then we'll be back and start the council meeting, we're adjourned.